Okay, thank you everybody for your patience. Thank you for joining. Um, we have um the finance subcommittee meeting to go over the ARPA information. We have Tim, um councillor Tim Allen from the finance subcommittee. Thank you, Tim, um for joining us. We also have councillor, president Jesse Letterman. We have councilman Clint Bruce at Kansas City. And as you join us is Melanie Apolby, who was the ARPA director and TJ Plant, um the CFO for the city of Springfield. So, thank you all, councillors.
Just, just real quick, is this being recorded? Okay, alright, beautiful.
I see the record cloud going, so, yes. Um, so I just wanted to thank you all for joining the ARPA um updates meeting today. Um, I know it's a lot and, but we just want to be able to communicate with the residents of the city of Springfield that's communicating with us every day about the funds and um thank you guys for working so hard, um trying to get these uh checks out for the fourteen hundred. I'm getting good updates finally on those, about people receiving them, so. But then they tell other people and then they come back and say, when are we getting ours? So I have to explain that you guys have a lot of applications and only have capacity to send out two to three hundred a week, so. It's gonna be some time for those just getting them in, so, but I do appreciate um the work that you're doing and I wanted to say that upfront because I know sometimes it feels like an attack, but it's not. I do appreciate your, your work. So I would just like to get um started with the update information, like how many applications you got in. Um, I think one other component that I asked for is um the ARPA funds that were spent by neighborhood. I don't know if you guys were able to um get that information together just yet, but um just the regular report and then we'll go from there.
So, well, before Melanie dives in with the reports and the information that we would share every time we meet, um just to kind of my way of an update. So as you are aware, uh we have the small business, new business, nonprofit, uh household assistance, neighborhood. Uh, we can get into all that, all ongoing while we're doing this fourteen hundred dollar household assistance. We've had overwhelming response based upon the need of our community. Uh, we have about fifteen thousand uh or more applications and they're coming in every day. Um, our staff is out straight trying to uh deal with those in a way that makes sure that we're getting them out as quickly as possible, but covering our tracks to make sure that there's not duplicates, that they're not uh widespread fraud going on or that. So we are only getting to two to three hundred a week that we know are fully vetted and ready to go. Uh, you can do the math on if it's two to three hundred a week and we got fifteen thousand, that it's gonna take a while. Uh, we have advertised for two part type administrative assistance. We have stolen stolen butter, right where we have uh borrowed and had staff from other departments come help us. We're actively seeking interns from Springfield College and others to kind of help us get caught up and um, but we are kind of at a standstill. I believe Billy Baker sent out an email to the council from the deputy treasurer more or less saying what we've been saying and I know it's not what anyone wants to hear and I apologize for that. Um, we do not have the capacity to take phone calls, do not have the capacity to return the emails. That is upsetting all the council councillors, rightly so. I'm not judging, I'm just saying the facts. Uh, and the United States Treasury is, is shutting down a lot of their areas of the uh rescue funds because of similar staffing issues and other concerns that, so. We're gonna have a less help from them as we try to navigate some of these things that we're trying to interpret. And I just say that all by way of saying, I know uh you are on the front lines getting uh the frustration of the city council. We are too, um my staff is probably at wit's end, ready to break. And we're doing the best we can. I just, I urge patients as we try to dig out from under this. Um, with that, Melanie, you wanna go through the?
Well, before that TJ, I wanted to, I know that I suggested halting the applications for a little bit. Um, has that conversation been had?
I have had that conversation numerous times going back to last six to eight months. Um, we were getting overwhelmed from the first few, first rounds, few rounds of applications that were coming in. Uh, and I have not been able to get traction to stop it.
Is there, I don't know, is there any support? I'm just gonna speak for myself. Is there any support I can give to? You know, I know I requested it in the email, um just giving you guys a little bit of time to catch up because I don't think the applications will stop um if we don't put a hold to it and um.
Our issue is if we don't stop or manage expectations, we're gonna be out of money um with relative quickness that um is like that we have right now. And I'm speaking honestly and who knows, but uh I think you guys have a right to know as a city council that, you know, we're doing everything we can as a team to help out as many folks and businesses and nonprofits that we can. Um, and we're just trying to get there as well. Uh, and as they keep coming in, they're, they're piling up and we're not gonna be even get to them to do our whole process of line review, redaction, all that stuff. Uh, so I have taken it upon myself to uh try to lead a um a re- uh trying to redevelop the process and try to get call center in, get the staff in, get whatever, whatever I can do to the kind of have the force multipliers that we're gonna need. Um, because either way, people need to know the status. Even if they don't get the money, they need to know that it's been seen or looked at and heard. And that is what the residents are not getting as of right now.
Okay, well, we'll keep advocating for it, or at least I will and um see what type of other supports are out there that may be able to um help the team. I'm glad that you're looking for the two admin assistants and also looking for the um interns at Springfield College. I don't know if you could look for interns anywhere else, but at least as a start.
I'll take stick interns. I'll take interns from anywhere. Uh, we had a good program with stick for a while. We had a good program with Springfield College for a while and then kinda um COVID kinda put a tamper on our ability to get kids in, students in, sorry. And then uh we'll do everything we can. I mean, I'll take, you know, at this point, whatever staff we can get there, we borrow uh and play from the elections department of Kirkstock is one of them that um, you know, we wanted, we needed help and so she, she's up here helping now and which is excellent, so uh we're taking all the help we can get.
Okay, alright, thank you TJ. Um councillor Clint Bruce, is this about data itself or about what we're speaking to specifically? If it's about data and rejection letters and stuff like that, we'll wait until we hear the report. But if it's about what we're speaking to specifically, please go ahead and um make your comments, sir.
Thanks, sure. Um, it's really uh TJ, just a quick comment. Um, definitely thank you, thank you for advocating for that. Uh, for to, to halting the, the application process because I think that's definitely key. Um, that we try to, try to get in front of this. Um, uh, cause again, we're on the, I know you guys are getting hammered. We're on the front lines all the time. I'm getting hit up each and every day, every second, pretty much regarding the application and where they stand. Um, so again, I just wanted to say thank you for the, for the hard work and continue to advocate. And I mean, and we just want to, we just want the process to be easiest as possible. Um, so what we understand, uh we're up, what we're up against and we just here to help. Um, so I just want to echo that sentiment to you guys, yeah.
Alright, now we'll get into the data, Melanie. Thank you for your patience. Thank you, um councillor Clint Bruce for um your support in that area as well.
No problem. Let me share and sorry, I didn't email it ahead. I can email it right after this meeting, the same exact report that we'll go over now. Can you guys see this? Great. Okay, so the first report gives us a head count of all of the applications in which we have received, broken down by the different categories. And so obviously the, the more significant categories than what we've just been talking about, which is at fourteen thousand five hundred eighty-seven applications for households and seniors. I put them together because they are technically now combined applications. So this is considering all of the old applications that we received when they were in two different categories.
Can we break those out though? Because I'm getting that question. How many are the old ones and how many are the new ones?
I can, yeah. Well, I can definitely break it down. Um, it's just not gonna show here because it's combined. Um, so we could definitely do that. Uh, so the, this is including all of the paper ones, all of the applications that we're also receiving online in the cognito form that people can go in and put in both Spanish and English versions. Um, this will be going up probably by another thousand or so because we have a backlog of uh those on emails that have been sent to us that we now have scan optics, the company helping us sort through those and intake. So this number will grow significantly more um within the next few weeks, once they're done doing those. Okay? And these are, sorry, this is the categories or the section here of the awards for each of these categories. So the bulk of, of course, is under the category for household and senior assistance, six hundred and eighty-two so far. And as TJ has mentioned, we are um every single week, myself included, my entire staff is all hands on deck reviewing every all of this right here and those applications. We literally review all of them, ensure that the paperwork is there. Uh, that the information that is required uh for award is there before moving forward. And then we have to work with multiple departments in order to cut out that final check. So we're doing that literally every day, every week, trying to produce between one hundred to three hundred awards. Um, so obviously with such a high volume, it's gonna take quite a significant time to, to get through all of these. Alright, so the next report that we have on here is the budget. So this is where I lay out all of the different categories in which we have had awards under or spending under. So this column simply tells us how much has either the mayor committed to spend or has already awarded under those categories. So it's the sum of those. And then here is more of the accounting info of those, what have we actually spent? What have we actually encumbered? What have we actually put in a requisition to spend? Um, and this column sums up these so that you can see what the differences are.
Can you um pause? I, I just wanna have councillors at screen by screen their questions, so we don't have to go back. And I have a question about the Build Back Springfield program, um what the requisition was for and the seventeen-five that's encumbered.
I don't have the exact amount because I do like a pivot table based off of munis. It gives me like the number. I can certainly give you what that is. I don't have what the exact thing is for that.
Okay, so if you could just um send that information to the council. Um, I just wanna know with the Build Back Springfield program, what are we, what do we have requisition in for? And seventeen-five is such a off number that um I would just like to know what that's encumbered for.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other councillors have any questions on this slide? So actual spent to date. Um, does that mean that that went out the door already? Or it's what, okay, that's what went out the door already? And then the encumbered?
Invoices, correct.
And invoices, okay. And then the encumbered column is um what we're holding to go out the door?
Correct. What we've already committed through a purchase order, but just haven't gotten an invoice for.
Okay, and then the requisition is um, explain the requisition column.
Yep, so the requisition is a request. So whenever a department has an award and they're looking to now put in a purchase order, it has to go through a requisition phase first. So once it gets through approvals, it turns into an encumbrance, which is the purchase order, and then it gets spent. But the beginning phase of all of that is the requisition phase.
Okay, and then the balance available, it's, it takes all of these, add them up, right? Well, it takes the actual spent and the encumbrance and the requisitions. And the, the difference between the funds that's in the account, uh minus those three columns is what's the available balance.
Correct. And then you'll see at the very bottom, there, right here where my mouse is, the total ARPA award is always listed here. So you have a reference point, which is the one twenty-three mil. And then below here is the difference between what has been committed in funds versus what has been awarded. And the percent uh that has uh that is available based off of that.
So the forty-eight thousand that's available just hasn't been committed anywhere.
This is forty-eight million.
I'm sorry, forty-eight mil, yes, yes it is. Uh, it just hasn't been committed to any programs or any, anything.
As of, yeah, a significant amount will likely be going to households though, because the households is only showing how much we've awarded so far. There ha- hasn't been a cap laid out for that. So obviously with so many of this, this is gonna go significantly higher.
Okay, alrighty. Thank you. Any um questions from any of the councillors on this screen? Okay, thank you, Melanie.
No problem. The next report here, I know it's a little difficult to see, let me see if I can. This is where uh the council has requested that we lay out all of the awards that has been uh provided by category, the name of the business or organization in which we've provided award to, what the status is of the contract. So they'll likely be one of uh two or three or three different categories. Either the, the contract is pending finalization or it's been finalized, or a check has already been issued, or it's completed. So you'll see all of those phases here. You will see the comparison between what they asked for versus what has been awarded and the round in which the award was made for those. And then here, if a check has been uh given out to the organization, you'll see what amount is it for? The date in which it was provided, and if the second check was provided, the information will be there as well. And so it goes into two pages, just because obviously the volume.
And can you send us this full report?
Yes, I'm gonna email it with the information you asked for, yes.
Okay, alrighty. Um, any questions on this screen from councillors? Okay.
And then the last report is basically a copy of this, but it's giving the demographic information for them. It's just a little too dense to add all of it in once, which is why it's separated. So again, same logic, the application category, the name of the organization that received funds, whether or not the organization is located in a QCT, which is a qualified census tract location, whether or not it's minority owned, women owned, veteran owned. And if it's a nonprofit, if it serves a minority population, which is why NP here is uh listed because it's only for nonprofits. So all the data is here and it is summarized neatly at the bottom. Right here. So you'll see a little bit of a summary of all of the applications of all the businesses and nonprofits. Uh, the applications that we've awarded, seventy-four percent of those are in, located in a QCT. Eighty-two percent are minority owned and it goes a little bit further into the demographics there. Thirty-four percent women owned, three percent veteran, and of the nonprofits, all of them serve minority populations.
Okay, so um I don't know if I understand the percentages on this screen. So it's not percentages based on the overall total of all of them combined. It's just based on the percentages of that category, right?
Oh, you're right. Because, for example, for minority owned businesses, we couldn't apply that to the nonprofits because they're not owned. So of all of the applications that we awarded that were businesses, there were sixty-one of them, fifty of them were minority owned.
Okay, alright. Okay, any questions on this particular screen from councillors? Okay, is the, is that the final?
Yes, that's the final page.
And the only thing that I asked, uh because it was asking me from someone in the community is um um if we could get a summary based on neighborhoods.
Yeah, so we didn't have the staff to do it, but as uh TJ just mentioned, we just got somebody that we're uh on loan from uh City Clerk. Since she's been here as of today, so I'm actually gonna have her work on that so we can add on to this. Another spreadsheet. Do you just want like a breakdown of all of these individually in the neighborhood or?
Yeah.
Okay, that's nice. We already have the data. It's just a matter of her plugging in there, so that's not gonna be a problem.
Okay, um, so I'll start with the first round of questions that I have. Um, and the first question that I have is folks have been getting like rejection letters. And so based on our understanding, when this process originally started for the small businesses, that if they get a rejection letter, they will go to um technical assistance to try to help them, you know, revamp their applications. Is that still part of the process?
Sort of. Uh, well, the answer is we do not have the resources to provide the technical assistance that needs to be done for every single application. Tons of applications are coming in that are not linked to COVID adequately to meet the uh federal guidelines. Tons are coming in that just do not have the forms. We have a lot of um people refusing to provide the forms that we need to have a complete file. Uh, and it's just a lot of things that we have a lot of outstanding issues and um, I don't know which ones you talked about specifically, because I didn't see all of them that went out. Uh, I know.
Do you have a number on how many rejection letters went out for small businesses?
That was a thirty-four or something like that?
Yeah, it was around uh between twenty-five and thirty-five.
Has any of the nonprofits been rejected?
Not yet. Okay, I have a conversation, I'm having a conversation with the mayor tomorrow that we gotta start rejecting ones that are just not gonna get there because they're just ineligible.
Okay, and how about uh for the fourteen hundred dollars household assistance, are they gonna also get rejection letters if they don't qualify? Or if there's like a duplicate request or some type of fraud thing going on?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay. Alright, um. I can't really think right now, so I'm gonna open the floor up to councillors if they have um questions or comments um at the time, at this time. Hmm, this is a first, isn't it, guys?
I came in, it just opened up and uh just told you everything out of the gate.
Councillor Hurst.
Yeah, um, so TJ, explain to me again what it is that we're saying to these individuals who were turning down. Are we saying to them that they're turned down because um their application is not up to snuff? Or, well, I mean, are we giving them any sort of explanation? Because I feel like the one in which, the one that was sent to me didn't provide much of an explanation at all, other than, you know, you don't, um, you're not eligible or uh, you're not, we're not, we're not considering your application at this time, or something along those lines. And so I guess is it, are we, are we letting them know that this is it for them and that there's not an opportunity for them to apply and sort of explaining why?
Belle, uh, do you have a copy of the letter that went out?
Yeah, the letter basically states that their award has been determined um after evaluation. It was ranked low and per the guidelines, low ranked uh applications will not be awarded and therefore um they're not be considered for review by the advisory committee.
And so similar to councillor Whitfield's point, I guess, you know, if, if somebody receives an application and they see that it's been deemed low, it would seem to me that based off of everything that I heard and I recollect that there was a process to get them from low to high. And so I think a lot of the frustration that folks are feeling is like alright, well, I was under the impression that there would be a mechanism or a way in which I could get to the point where my application was acceptable. Is that, is that not going to be the case any longer? Or, and, and if, and if that is the case, then why don't we just let them know?
So, at this point, the response has been overwhelming on all application uh your fronts, all of them have just been overwhelming. And we are gonna run out of money if we don't start saying no to applications that do not make a lot of sense. And the ones that are getting up to the advisory committee and ultimately to the mayor, in my estimation, are huge requests of things that I don't think we wanna be in the business of. And we, as an administration, need to make a determination uh where to cut it off. And the error in the part of that uh that I guess I own is trying to manage the expectations of, and maybe underestimating just the real volume that we receive. And I'm, I'm not saying the household assistance. Household assistance, that one's obvious and easy to understand. Record inflation tied up against, you know, a pandemic tied up against, you know, a war in Ukraine that's certain gas crisis. I mean, that I can get. It's the rest of the small businesses and, and those that, um, you know. I feel like we've done a decent job stopping some of the bleeding, but there's still a lot of requests out there that I need tech assistance or just won't get there. And at some point, we gotta just say no and break, pull off the Band-Aid. And I know it's not easy and I'm gonna be pushing some of that tomorrow and saying, you know, here's what's made it through. And here's what, you know, where do we think? I mean, so there were some other requests of like five million dollars. And to do stuff, I mean, there's all sorts of requests and I get the needs there, but we just can't say yes to everyone.
No, understood. I guess my, my only thing is that it'd be, first of all, I don't mind if the money's being spent and we're running through it, if we're spending it in the right places and it's going to the right people who need it. So that, I, I, I don't have an issue with that at all. Um, I guess, you know, my only point would be if we could just make sure that when we're sending out these letters, that folks are clear in terms of, you know, their application either did not meet the criteria or it's just something that the administration is not going to fund. And um, you know, a, a, and there's no sense in you depending upon or relying upon the city, helping you the rest of the way through this process to get your application up to snuff. Something along those lines to where folks still don't have their, their hopes high and they know that this is it. Um, so that, that would be my thought. I guess, can I ask the rest of my questions, councillor Whitfield, or is there somebody else?
But I just want, can I piggyback off of what you just said, uh before you move on? Um, so the concern that I have, right, is like we got the email about, from the freight person and she's like, I read all four hundred and some odd pages and I know that I meet the federal guidelines. So just having that random blurb, I don't think is effective. I think we need to inform them of why they don't qualify. Like, these forms are missing, if we can do that. And um at this time, your application will not be eligible for technical assistance. Just something to let them know that this is the end. Um, this is, you know, you can resubmit another application if you want to or something like that while it's open. Hopefully that won't be for a while, but um like, we have to explain to them, like, why they're not eligible and why they're not moving to the next stage. And we cannot provide technical assistance for this particular application at the time. Because like she feels that she qualified um based on the federal guidelines. She had help writing the application from professionals and um just to say you don't meet the federal guidelines on somebody who read the federal guidelines. You know, you know, that's just not um the right thing to do. And then the other point to councillor Hurst's point, um, like I feel really I'm not, I don't wanna harp on Big Y again, but I feel like we should be taking care of the businesses that we already have in place um in the city of Springfield before we even consider the new business applications. And again, I don't feel like they struggled as much as some of these small businesses that it's their only income, like Katrina Holly is their only income. Um, they've been struggling since pandemic because hairdressers, of course, closed or salons closed. And like, she's really a case and Will Chapman and many others like that, really a case of folks that's really, really struggling. Couldn't even, like, she had to let go of all her employees and things like that. Yet we're given a million dollars to start a new business. Like, those type of things just don't pass the smell test with me. So I think that we should be really careful about um making those type of decisions because it doesn't look good to the community either. So I just wanted to say that. Councillor Hurst?
Yeah, just another question is, are we, when we award these businesses their initial award, are we making these businesses spend their money upfront and then reimbursing them? Or are we giving them the money upfront and then allowing them to do what it is that their application said?
We give them fifty percent upfront. Uh, so they come in and meet with our compliance team and compliance goes through all the expectations of what they need to do in order to keep this money and to spend it on. In order to keep this money and to spend it on the application and the, um, stated, uh, reasons in their application and. And then ties the federal law. That is the complete file that we have. So they sign this contract and then they get, uh, half their check. Uh, money in a check and then they come in, show us, demonstrate they did what they said they were gonna do and then we give them the second half of their check.
Okay, because I actually was talking to a cleaners that had, uh, mentioned or, or, um, at least their understanding was that. They would not get the money until they produce the receipts of what it was that they spent it on. So I just wanna make sure that that is, is not what is happening.
Well, so, uh, if it's one that they're asking for because they put their own money in during COVID. They do have to provide those receipts to get the check. So if their, if their application said I had spent fifteen thousand dollars on PPE. And adversely impacted me, um, we would then ask them to show us the receipt, uh, totaling fifteen thousand dollars. And then they would get the check cut. We will not ask them, if they're doing something prospectively, we will not ask them. Money. If we're doing something retrospect, we will.
Got it. Um, okay. And then the only other question that I have is those businesses that. Are still in the queue, uh, what, wh- wh- where do they fall, uh, in the midst of these fifteen thousand dollar household applications? Right, like, um, the small businesses, the, the new businesses, the nonprofits who. Are still waiting to hear from you all, um, where do they fall? And the queue and where do those individuals that have already completed their fifty? Uh, the fifty percent of what it is that they need to do that are waiting on you all to sort of. Double check whether they've done what they needed to do with that fifty percent. To receive the other fifty percent, where do they fall as well? So I guess it's a two-part question because I've heard from a number. Of individuals in both those situations.
Anyone that's been awarded, they have to go through the process of providing us all the necessary paperwork to. Uh, continue through the compliance process. They're not being held up. That is the compliance side, um, that we have to keep working with them. Anyone?
I was gonna say it has nothing to do, they, they're not being held up at all by these fifteen thousand.
They're not being held up at all. Chances are that they're being held up for is that they don't have or cannot produce a piece of documentation we need.
Got it.
So, like, if they don't have, you know, financial statements or tax returns. Or they gotta go through a, a, a literal box of receipts. You know, just taking them a lot longer to get what, what we need in order to cut them the check. But those, those folks are the ones that generally know because we're, we're in communication with those folks. And so you guys are hearing from, uh, which are the ones that are in limbo that are just kind of waiting. Uh, until we can start to get back on addressing the. Applications again through a meaningful, in a meaningful way.
So has that just stopped and we've sort of? You, uh, that, that, and, and that process has been superseded by. A household process and our desire to get those checks out?
Yes.
It has. That's disappointing. But there are folks that have put in their, so are we no longer going in order in terms of the individuals that have submitted their applications?
So we're going in order based upon when they're submitted. And we're not moving down the list right now.
So I guess, I, I, I guess you're talking about outside of the fifteen thousand, which you're working on regularly. You're saying the, 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 the other ones that have already applied previously much earlier than those. Than that fifteen thousand, they're in limbo. We're not dealing with those individuals, but we are dealing with. The fifteen thousand right now to try to get those off your plate. Is that, is that accurate?
That's a good summation of it.
I mean, that's a, that's a little disappointing. And the only reason why, why I say it's disappointing is because, you know, those are the ones that are gonna have the long-term benefit. I mean, just shelling out fifteen hundred dollars for folks to spend however which way they want that. You know, it's not, it's not going to be reinvested in the community because we haven't put any measures in place to. Uh, to, to force folks to do that. That's, that, that's gonna come and go. And the thing that is going to be longstanding and the thing that is, I think is going to, you know, really elevate. Springfield and economic development and job creation, all of that good stuff. Sounds to me like it's at a standstill and those are really the people, you know, um, those individuals have been struggling as well. Uh, and it just seems to me like that, that's kind of what we should be looking into, um, or dealing with and addressing. As a.
I don't disagree with any of those comments, Counselor. My issue really comes down to one thing and that's staffing. Uh, we have another person starting, uh, first meeting of October, uh. And he's gonna come in and, uh, give a hand. We have the administrative assistants posted. I'm looking at others, so. As soon as we get staffed up, I can get administrative work off the, the folks doing the real work. Um, to get back to addressing that, um, logjam and start breaking that down.
I get it. I just wanna make sure that we're doing what's fair and that we're also not just, not, not just doing what is easy, right? Because I'm sure you sifting through those, those household applications is much easier and you can do. Many more of them than you would the businesses which require a lot more. So anyhow, I, I, I get it. You got a tough job. Um, you know, keep working at it and hopefully we can get some more staffs into them later. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, um, Counselor Hurst. And just to piggyback off of what Counselor Hurst said, I think it's would be important that when staff come in. We make sure that they have specific focuses and I know that that might be easier said than done because even the finance team. Have specific focuses like meeting with different departments, their needs and making sure, you know. The spending is where it should be and, you know, and programs that the departments wanna bring in and things like that, but. As we bring in staff for the ARPA team, um, I think that it would be important that. We do look at the small businesses because I'm gonna tell you the truth, those are the ones that we hear from the most because they had their applications in for so long. So we could get staff that just focus on the small business applications. Um, I don't know what really happens with the neighborhoods, buil- build back. Springfield program, I think, better program, I don't know, is with Tim and his team. Um, but definitely we want to have some staff that just focus on those small business applications because. Folks are really, uh, close their doors or struggling. That's gonna be like vacancies and just, it just has a trickle effect. The other thing that I had asked for in writing was who sits on the committees and I would like to know how often, um, these committees meet. So I know it goes to the first round and then it goes to the second round. Again, can you tell?
I can provide that, uh, I'll do it verbally right now, but I can certainly, uh, type it up. It's, uh, me, uh, as CFO, Tim Sheen as Chief Development Officer, Chase Wong for Compliance. Gladys and City Council President.
Well, who, so that's the team wants it passes everything else, right?
That's the team that recommends to the mayor or does not.
Recommends to the mayor. Who, who does it go to before it gets to that team?
For that, it's Brian Connors and Echo Dev or, and a couple of analysts on my staff that we pull from the finance team. And that's blind and they're just checking boxes to make sure it's, like, you know, meets all the needs of, um. The final rule to treasure.
And then it goes to the compliance team and you guys say highly advantageous, advantageous, da, da, da. Like that, right? And only highly, and only highly advantageous goes to the mayor?
Yes, so that goes to the advisory committee and the advisory committee would say, um. Here's a recommendation, we recommend no, we recommend yes, we recommend. You know, yes, but at, you know, a certain amount or a range and he has ultimate say. And will say, yes, no, yes, no, and all that, so.
So they passed all the compliance work with Brian Connors and the analysts. Then they go to this compliance team. Advisory team to say, okay, so is there a time when highly advantageous applications will not make it to the mayor's desk?
Uh, I don't know if I've seen a time yet, uh, because Mel has been pretty good about. Uh, making sure that if it gets, so everything we have to do for the, for the federal guidelines is processed. They wanna know, internal officers wanna know, process, process, process. So they go, wanna know that we're not arbitrarily, um. Picking them over other ones. Now, having said that, if it gets through the process. And the mayor's chief elected official makes a determination that he doesn't wanna do it, that's okay too. So, um, so Mel has elevated everything. And I'm not gonna put words in Counsel Letterman's mouth, but the round that I was on last week. Was a very expensive round of things I would not recommend to the mayor. Uh, and try to push on that just because. I, the amount of money in the big bank for your dollar, I just don't think we should be doing. And, and all that's what I want, because I'd rather reallocate it to exactly what this. Oh, um, committee wants, getting it to the people who need the most and I don't disagree with that, so.
Alright, and then my final question before I turn into Counsel Letterman, um, there are some instances when. Um, applicants are being awarded without submitting an application and one that I'm thinking of specifically was. Um, from, um, Tim Shan's department for the Pellegrino Brothers. Um, how, how does that happen?
So there is, from what I understand, there is an application. That's the Worthington Street one that the housing project on Worthington Street?
Yes.
Application submitted that was reviewed and awarded through the same process.
Nope. Mm-mm, because Tim Shan sent me the documentation and I could email it to you where. Echo Dev put in a request for two point four million for, um. To award to these folks that's in a qualified census tract. Um, there was no application. I asked them, it's all in writing. I'll send it to you. So I'm just trying to figure out how, how that happens for.
Mel, I don't know if you have that. Do you have?
I can send it to you. Tim, Tim sent it to me because I wanted to know, I wanted to see their application. And he said it didn't go through a application department. The request came from our department. Um, asking for this funds for this particular, um, development. So I have it and then I have. Uh, yeah, I have the write-up that.
That's frustrating because that's news to me.
That is frustrating. That's very frustrating to me.
That could be a compliance issue, so.
Well, I hope it is a compliance issue. I hope it's reviewed. I'm gonna send it to you and I'm gonna send it to the council. Because I, I requested it because I wanted to see, you know, what was in his application to get it pushed through so, so quickly. And he said, well, it wasn't an application process, it's something we wrote. And then he sent me what was written from that department. So I know that, I know departments can request funds, like the housing department requested funds for certain programs and then. There's that neighborhood program, but I don't think that any department should write a request. For any one, um, organization to receive funding for, um, development. If they're not gonna, um, offer those same services to other organizations that want to maybe develop. Um, property and things like that, but I will forward that over to you in the council, but I do want to give Counsel Letterman, um, the opportunity to speak.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions, um, and then I have some comments myself. So first, I just wanted to clarify what you were speaking about previously TJ in terms of, and Melanie in terms of the. Um, priority in which you're now evaluating applications. So did I understand correctly, you were saying you're prioritizing household assistance applications? And not prioritizing business and nonprofit at this time? Is that, was that what I understood?
Uh, yeah, you understood that correct.
Okay, so how, how, do we know how many applications have been received since our last meeting a few weeks ago?
Mel, do you happen to have a number, uh, the, for small businesses or for all of them?
All of them.
So, all, sorry, I misunderstood the question. All small businesses applications by the date?
Um, how many applications since our last?
How many changed from the last report we had to done in the, in the physical meeting? How many reports changed?
I don't have the difference between the two. I just have the total amount that we have.
We've been trying to track that down for you, Counsel.
I mean, I'm just trying to get a feeling. I'm trying to get like a real feeling on it this time, how much is still coming in?
Oh, yeah. The amount that we're getting on a weekly basis for the L categories except for household. Has trickled down to very few and far between. I would say no more than like ten to twenty applications new are we receiving every week?
And that's down from six hundred, right?
Yeah, correct. It, it used to be a lot more busy, but now the huge one is household. That's the one that's taking up the, the bulk of time right now.
So how many household now are coming in a week?
It's hard to tell because I have, we have Scan Optics now who's actually picking them up. So at one point, we were literally receiving between five hundred to a thousand a week. Uh, and it was like just a swath of people within three weeks that were like all, all at the same time and then it slowed down.
And we have forty-eight million dollars unencumbered.
At the moment, yes.
Not committed to Build Back Better Neighborhood Fund or just forty-eight million that, that. We have forty-eight million to consider at this time fifteen thousand applications for.
Yeah.
Plus small business.
Correct.
Plus nonprofit.
Right.
So wha- what's our, what's our end game on the fourteen hundred dollar household assistance? How many of these awards is the administration going to be willing to make?
That's up to the mayor.
I don't have a firm number, um, you know, we were looking to anywhere between. Uh, well, we're originally looking at a cap of three and a half million and now I'll say it's probably gonna be closer to ten million. And ten million is only gonna buy you seven thousand or eight thousand, whatever. I haven't done the quick math. And, you know, if you do ten thousand, that's one point four, uh, fourteen million, so. It's eating up fast.
So I wanted, I wanted to highlight that just for us to think about, um, because it's a, it's a concern to me. In that that is the primary way in which this process has set up household assistance is, is through this fourteen hundred dollar. Um, payment, uh, as opposed to other broader programs that folks might qualify for based on impact that could. You know, prospectively or potentially award more. Um, so I just want us to think about that. I think the other question that I have is, you know, we had gone over a couple of reforms. Um, in the last finance committee meeting, talking about setting up a call center and online portal. Um, the opportunity to be able to track online. Have we made any concrete steps towards that since that meeting or we still just sort of conceptualize?
Still just talking about it and trying to figure out the best way to do it. Um, you know, I have a full-time job to do on top of this job, so it's been a challenge. And I'm not trying to cry poor about, or try, cry about it and settle, look at that as I'm just being honest with everybody.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. I, I am on my lunch break as we speak, right? So I, I get it, uh, but. But I'm just trying to, you know, just keep us, keep some focus on, eh, in our piece here relative to just tracking everything that we're talking about. And being able to re- report back out. So, um, so I'm hopeful that we can see, you know, in the near future. Uh, something come to fruition with some of those reforms, um, because I do think that that will go a long way. Uh, to showing the community that there's gonna be an opportunity to, to engage and have their questions answered. Um, I did wanna talk about the ARPA Advisory Committee. Um, I did attend, uh, the first ARPA Advisory Committee meeting that has been held since I became president. And just to kind of refresh, uh, some folks' recollection, so the, the presence of the city council president on the ARPA Advisory Committee. Is something that was supported by the majority of counselors who put part in the conversations that this committee had held. Um, because we wanted to make sure that the city council, you know, had at least a seat at the table. So, you know, I wanna be clear that the selection process is not in the hands of the city council president. Uh, or of the city council, but, you know, I am at least glad that we have an opportunity to see this one piece of the process. And for me as council president to be able to come back and speak with counselors through this committee or, or other opportunities. Um, so as TJ had alluded to, the, you know, committee met, I think, September twelfth. There was a handful of applications that were forwarded, uh, from that initial team after the review. And they totaled, you know, I wanna say like twenty-two million dollars, um, eh, just for about a dozen applications. And so I think, you know, what I picked up from that meeting and the individuals who were present was really a lot of the same concerns that are being voiced here on this committee meeting. Which was, you know, these are very large sums of money, um, we wanted to understand better the tie to COVID. And also understand better, you know, if these are the level of requests that are now coming in, how are we gonna make sure that people are able to fairly, um, receive those? And so at, at that time, the committee decided to continue. And so at at that time, the committee decided to continue those items, um not to issue a recommendation at that time and let the finance team and the ARPA team come back, both, you know, through our process here at the City Council and their internal processes to see how they want to move forward with the the sum of money that currently exists at this time. So that was the majority of what took place uh during that meeting. And I'm always happy, um you know, to talk with counselors about, uh you know, anything that does occur uh through that process as the council's representative there. Um but there has not been another meeting called uh since that time. And so that's really the only report um that I have. I think the last thing that I'll say and sort of relative to that is I also wanna make sure that we have some money for municipal programming. I think that we know there were municipal needs that went that the community benefits from. Um that the fact that the pandemic uh occurred highlighted some of the gaps in service that the city can provide to benefit residents. And so I think if we're looking now at about forty eight million left, you know, we need to start conceptualizing. Um we need to start conceptualizing what that how that money is gonna be split up to do it fairly. I think the challenge that we have and coming into the ARPA Advisory Committee kind of, you know, in the middle of a term, right? Um due to the nature in which I assume this position, uh you you know, I think the challenge, right, is that there's been a lot of awards made already, right? And so we wanna see how can we be fair to those going forward um while also considering the type of money that other people got, right? And that, you know, that's not a challenge that is of our making, um but it is a challenge that we need to rise to. Um so that's basically where I'm at. I think the last question I had relative to actually the Advisory Committee, TJ, is these um some of these pots that have been put together, Build Back Better, the Neighborhood Advisory Fund. I wasn't a member of the committee when some of those were awarded. Are those gonna come through the ARPA Advisory Committee as well? Or do those just go through their departments since those funds have kind of been like?
They'll come through the Advisory Committee, um the departmental request, so. Um, right now, I've been meeting with the mayor to potentially reallocate some of the pots of money that exist to uh add more to the household. To and uh, you know, maybe less to Build Back Better or less to some of these other ones and more to the housing, the neighborhood, um revitalization stuff, you know, the um the emergency repair program is tremendously successful. The Healthy Homes, albeit expensive, is tremendous tremendously successful and that can be transformational for our neighborhoods. Uh, my recommendation as of now is to hold back at least thirty million of unspent money for citywide needs that we can address. Excuse me, sorry, fighting back a cold. And that's kind of where I've been. So I've been trying to reallocate the budget and I don't have any final numbers to share with the City Council yet, but I will when I have them.
I I think that, you know, that's helpful for me to know. With doing some math, um so I think, Counselor, I can't, I I I'll let you, I'll let you report on that. But um I think that she has some of the numbers to give us an idea between now and the last meeting. I think the last thing I'll say is, you know, it it again, we can't undo some of what was awarded, right? I mean, that's beyond our control. Um I was not on the ARPA Advisory Committee. Even if I had been on the ARPA Advisory Committee, I'm one vote out of five. What I can do is come back here and and talk with all of you. Um but I think that what we have to do going forward is we need to set some priorities as a city uh about how we are going to allocate what is left and make make those priorities clear. You know, that that's our job as elected leaders. We have a responsibility to be able to uh make clear to people what the reality is and and how we can best serve them. Uh and so I'm I'm hopeful that, you know, I think these meetings are really important. I'm hopeful that that the administration and the mayor will see fit to be able to lay it out on the table so that people understand what is available and what we can do moving forward. Because right now, hundred and twenty six million is down to forty eight. You know, it's down to forty eight and uh I don't know how many people really realize that. So I think that's important to highlight. Thank you.
And Counselor Letterman, um couple of comments. I did do the number, so I put today this number versus um what we had nine seven. And it looks like the majority of what came in were households or what what you're processing. And then you got a few like forty plus um total applications that are not um the household senior application. So as we see a bulk of them that's coming, this is a senior household application. I think it will be smart um for the finance team to calculate what we got in. Make sure um at least we can cover those and then put a cap on the senior household applications. And once it's complete, it's complete. Like, once it's done, it's done, just like any of the other programs. So I think that that is a smart thing to do. As far as like holding thirty million, I think that's high because I don't, we have to consider um a lot of the other funding that comes in. Like, we still got MGM money to spend. We we're getting money from um what Eversource, forty million, forty some million from Eversource. So there's other funding sources that we can use to um help city services. So I think there should be a number to apply to city services. But I think this funds um should go to folks that was disproportionately impacted. And I know these services also help those individuals, but um they have an immediate need now. And so they lost, some of them lost their breadwinners. And so to the extent that we get help in some type of way uh with those disproportionately impacted, because sometimes I see city services um or some of the funding come in and it goes to one particular organization or it goes to one particular community. And then other communities, other organizations, other um individuals are left out. Or the information isn't getting out to the community um appropriately because of, you know, I'm just gonna say lack of marketing or lack of marketing in areas that um may need the resources the most. And so I I definitely think that when we do market for these programs that we make sure we're hitting the media outlets that target different demographics. And I'm talking neighborhood wise, I'm talking gender, race, I'm talking, you know, we need to make sure that we're getting information um to all city residents across the board. So that's just my opinion on um what I think we should hold. I don't know what that number is. However, we do have other resources that come into this Springfield.
I'm not married to any particular number, just so the council know, but uh we're working on, I'm working on a uh ARPA piece, a bond authorization that's gonna be coming to the council sometime, probably in October, November, to authorize it to some other projects that we're looking to do. Uh and then if there's free cash or other things, we're kind of trying to map out all that so we can really just have something that's transformational for the city. And that has been my goal from the get-go. Um and so more has to be for services uh from ARPA and and we're gonna increase the debt uh authorization, the bond authorization, fine. Uh I mean, this, we have other ways to look at it. So I'm trying to do a whole big picture view of the needs and then kind of map out the funding.
That sounds great, TJ. Counselor Hurst, and we only have two minutes left. So Counselor Hurst, um if Counselor Click Bruce and Alan don't have any comments, we'll close after you. Or questions?
Yeah, I think you started to touch on it, TJ. I think that the the biggest thing that we need to do now is to come up with a plan for the remainder of the money. And if other monies are able to be factored into whatever plan is being created then then so be it. But to Counselor Letterman's point, once we do end up coming up with that plan, that plan has to be communicated immediately, right? Because if you're only gonna give the seventy five hundred individuals, and I'm, I know you didn't commit to this, who have applied, you're gonna have another seventy five hundred folks who are upset. And and if we don't give the residents the plan until two weeks from now, then you're probably gonna have another three to five thousand applications that uh folks are just gonna be disappointed when they're, you know, they probably shouldn't have wasted their time. And then to my final point is that if we're gonna start cutting things, you know, putting caps on things and, you know, we're not gonna, we we we're, folks are not gonna have the opportunity to even be considered, but yet they're still applying. For small businesses, that could actually be extremely critical for them because they will have wasted resources on trying to get this application that they thought they could wait on. Uh they'll submit it and then they won't know that that the likelihood of them being approved is next to nil and that you've got so many in front of them. And, you know, we're gonna ultimately put a cap on it and they'll really realistically never be considered. So whatever it is that folks decide to do, I just think it needs to be communicated and communicated broadly uh to the residents of Springfield and to the business owners of Springfield. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and then my final um comment. So just to, you know, kind of let you know where the small business owners were when the when the um application was first rolled out, it was communicated to them to apply for you what your needs are. That was the communication. So when when they submit their application, you see these astronomical amounts. I want you to realize that that was the communication. Doesn't mean you're gonna get funded the full amount of your need, but put in, put in everything that your needs are. That's what was communicated on those info sessions. And so if they're looking at their organization needs and say, okay, well, we need five million dollars, well, maybe we'll get a percentage of that, but we want you guys to see the big picture need of what the needs are. That's what they were communicated to do. So I don't think that they're just like, oh, just give us this fifteen million or oh, just give us this five million. That's what they were communicated to do and then hoping that some type of level of support will be given to them, even if it's like way less than what they asked for. Getting something is better than getting nothing. So I just wanted to um just, you know, on the side of the small business. It was what they were communicating to do. Now, if we had a cap, if we had a cap saying each small business is only eligible for five hundred thousand, then I'm pretty sure they would have wrote to that. I mean, a max of five hundred thousand or something like that. I'm sure they would have wrote to that, but that's not what the communication was upfront. So people were doing what they were advised to do.
Agreed. And I I'm not just saying, I don't disparage anyone that submitted a higher application. Um, you know, we need to do a better job of managing expectations.
Yeah, yeah. So that was my final comment. Um and we are at two oh two, so I don't like to keep the meeting longer than an hour. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your due diligence. I hope you get the staff that you need right away. If it's anything we could do to help, get you some interns or whatever um you need, just let us know. And I, I mean, I got some contacts with stick in HCC and maybe we could um work that angle too.
Well, I appreciate everybody's uh listening and any questions on us now. We're we're doing our best. Thanks, everyone.
Alrighty. Thank you so much.